Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, January 8th Board of Selectmen Meeting. I'll read the agenda. 6:00 PM Executive Session. The Board of Selectmen will enter into Executive Session for the purpose of discussing litigation strategy with respect to threatened litigation, of which members of the Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee have been informed. We will then reopen at 7:30 for Citizens Input. 7:35 Economic Development Committee Update. 7:50 Tree Trimming Program Update and Discussion. Roger Hill, Dave Lavalverde. 8:05 FY '20 Budget Discussion. 20 Pine Street Parking, New Proposed Commercial Parking License for 28. 30 Pine Street. 8:35 Selectmen's Update. 8:40 Town Manager's Update. 8:45 Assistant Town Manager's Update. And then several action items.
Executive Session at 8:50 as well.
Oh, exactly. Yeah, you're right. And then we will go into Executive Session on or around 8:50 to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for contract negotiation with non-union personnel, fire chief contract. And then we will not come back to open session.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Now, can we address some of those concerns now?
It's your call, Mr. Chairman.
Concerns about, sorry, about the executive session?
Apparently, that's what she has a question on, the executive session.
Okay, it may be procedural, so we can find out what it is.
So, before you do roll call for executive session, I just wanted some clarification. You just read off why you're going into executive session. And the description seems a little misleading to me and to others. I've been fielding phone calls since Friday. I know that it was amended on Monday to just members of the committee. We act as well as you guys do as a committee. So, members should not be holding meetings without updating us, you know? And it puts me in a bad spot when I have members of the community reaching out to me. I'm the secretary of that committee, and I have no idea what's going on. I just feel that I know nothing about threats of litigation. And you guys are going into executive session to discuss threats of litigation? And none of our committee members were invited to be here tonight? So, if you could explain that to me?
Well, the reason, I mean, I'll quickly explain, and then we're gonna have to go into executive session. Your board is an appointed board of the Board of Selectmen.
Correct.
And the Board of Selectmen needed to hear and go into, discuss, and digest, and come up with a plan going forward.
A plan going forward of the committee? About the committee?
No, about our role as Boards of Selectmen on issues.
Dealing with this issue.
Dealing with sensitive-type issues like this. And I really can't say much more in open session.
Then I would say that you're gonna deal with something like that and not bring the committee into it?
We will, eventually.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yeah.
The idea of this, and you're correct, it was, we changed the wording just to a clerical correction because it wasn't that your board had an official meeting where you discussed these threats. And nobody else had a separate meeting about it. And my understanding is that one or two individuals, and correct me if I'm wrong with respect to the facts.
That's correct.
One or two individuals informed the town that there had been these threats made. And the town, wanting to respond appropriately to your committee and to the town in general, is having a strategy meeting to discuss how to respond to those threats and how to make a plan to get back to your committee with.
It was our, for listing it as the committee was supposed to be, was informed, it was actually members of the committee. So, that's why we corrected it on Monday.
Can I ask a question under that?
I don't wanna go too much further with not being in executive session.
This is a question about going into executive session. So, we've got board docs. There was nothing given to us. So, we're about to go into an executive session for one and a half hours. I've never done that before, one and a half hours with no information given. So, when we raise our hand to go into executive session, I want it clear, you're saying it's our role, or members of the role, that's what we're gonna discuss. You're saying there's litigation. Under what section?
Threatened litigation.
Okay. So, obviously, under the open meeting law, there's an exemption for executive session for, it's a no-brainer for existing litigation. But if we're going in for threatened, is it, does it fall under the category of imminent? It does?
Yes. You can have pending litigation. And if that was the case, we would need to specify that either the name of the case, or the individuals, or the property, or some way to give people information about what we're, what case we're talking about. If it's threatened litigation, that's, we need to prepare for a defense.
Okay. So, there has been threats of litigation. So, that's the reason that we're going, is the way it's termed here is clear and imminent threats of litigation. So, that's what we're going to discuss. Okay. So, in the future, and I reached out this morning for information, no information, and you're asking us to go into executive session, not knowing until we're in there what we're talking about. I have not seen that before, and I'm not, from my opinion, it's not fair to the board to ask us to do that.
All right.
So, I'll say to the chair, this is the chair's. So, no information, and you're saying it's about how we act, or committees act. You're saying one thing, and now we're discussing this for 10 minutes?
It's information that this board needs to hear in executive session, and I really don't wanna get too much further down.
Yeah, I think it'll become clear when we do the executive session, and it may not take an hour and a half.
It may so, but you're asking us to vote to go into it with no information at all, other than a line here that was changed on Monday morning. In the future, could we put what the, if it's imminent, follow the procedures of what the open meeting law says and state there, it's potential litigation?
Threatened is just as good as potential. And I helped word the language for the agenda.
Okay.
So, it's consistent with the open meeting law.
Right.
And I've also talked with the Attorney General, just to make sure that everything we're doing tonight is correct.
Okay, so, on Friday, it was not correct?
No, it was correct. And again, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I was told, because I was called to say, how do we change this? Just a clerical error. Our initial understanding was that the entire committee was aware of the threats. We were then told that, no, no, it was just member, somebody from the committee, I don't know who it was, brought it to the town's attention. So, we said, oh, that's fine, we can correct it. We didn't know that it was just one or two members, so now we'll correct it.
Right. That's exactly what happened.
Okay. So, in the future, when we have an appointed committee, because I got the phone calls, and I got the anxiety as well, was there any communication back to your committee? I'm surprised that more people weren't here from your committee, since it's listed that it's your committee.
I believe they were told not to.
Okay, some of the members that I talked to had no idea. And there's a lot of anxiety.
I can tell you that I communicated directly with the chairman, and I asked a message with him yesterday to let him know that. And so, that we were, that there was no reason for the committee to be here tonight, and that this was strictly a meeting of the board, not for members of the committee. And I conveyed that message to actually two members of the committee, who actually asked about it as well.
And if I could add, Mr. Chairman, part of the reason for that is initially, we were gonna have a joint meeting with that committee, then decided it was probably, and by "we," I just mean the chair and I discussed, and Town Manager discussed, why don't we have a selectmen's meeting first to decide how the selectmen wanna proceed? And then we can have a joint meeting if that works for everybody with the committee.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Leah, you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, sure. Move to enter into executive session to reconvene in open session on or about 7:30 PM for the purpose of discussing litigation strategy with respect to threatened litigation, of which members of the Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee have been informed.
Second.
Motion made, second. Further discussion? Fellows in favor?
You need a roll call vote, sorry.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Mark, yes.
David, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Just came out of executive session. This is the Tuesday, January 8th Board of Selectmen Meeting. I'll read the agenda briefly again. 7:30 Citizens Input. 7:35 Economic Development Committee. 7:50 Tree Trimming Program Update and Discussion. 8:05 FY '20 Budget Discussion. 8:20 Pine Street Parking, New Commercial Parking Lot License. 8:35 Selectmen's Update. 8:40 Town Manager's Update. 8:45 Assistant Town Manager's Update. And then we have some action items. So, seeing that this is Chief Hatfield's last Board of Selectmen Meeting, would you lead us into your lives, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. I said, put you on the spot like that. All right, 7:30. Anybody here for Citizens Input? Seeing none. We'll go to the Economic Development Committee Discussion, revised RFP for the funeral home.
Chris, I'm gonna sit in the audience and listen to just as recusing myself.
Hello?
Hello.
Just tell everybody who everybody is here.
Sure. I'm Paige Duncan. I'm the planning director.
Steve Coop, member of Economic Development Committee.
So, we are before you tonight, we have a couple members of the EDC with us as well. We are before you tonight to bring in front of you another draft of the RFP for the fire station and funeral home property. As you know, the last time, well, to let folks know that didn't know, and you, as you may know, we did do an RFP at the end of the summer, and we received one proposal. Unfortunately, it was not a fully compliant proposal, so it didn't count. So, it basically was non-responsive. We spent the last few months revisiting what we did wrong, or what we learned, lessons learned. We spoke to Mass Development, and we spoke to the development community, and we also got Steve involved, because Steve is actually on the private sector of building. So, we figured it would be helpful to have a realistic approach and a viewpoint, as opposed to, you know, the non-development side, which is where we sit. So, we do have a revised proposal. I think you all saw it in your board docs this week. And we have streamlined it. The vision continues to be a mixed-use development with some residential and a restaurant involved. We do not stipulate how it to be done. You know, the building, either building could remain, or they could be torn down, or there could be a combination of the two. And we've just streamlined, basically, the requirements. We've tried to be very clear of the, for their evaluation criteria. And we've recommended a lower reserve price. And I'm imagining that's where much of the discussion will be, is about the reserve price. So, I didn't know if anybody had any questions besides that, or if you wanted to just get into sort of talking about the reserve.
So, from the original RFP, besides the reserve price, just a few, what other things have changed?
We streamlined a lot of the requirements, like the forms and whatnot. We cut out, I think it was about 15 pages of description and such. So, we really just streamlined it. And we also made the evaluation criteria very specific to this project. So, we really didn't do much, except reserve the lower, the price, and streamline the sort of application process. And that was really all, because we, at Mass Development, thought things looked good. They didn't really suggest, we were worried about the municipal conversion permit being a barrier, and that no one seemed to think that was a major barrier in the process.
That's still intact?
That's still in here, built in, yes. And...
Doc, you have a question?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, with your research, why did you think, why do you think we got such a poor response the first time around?
I think it was the reserve price.
Really?
Yeah. That's what the feedback we got at the, we had a couple folks attend the opening, the bid opening, and they were both folks that did not bid, but were extremely interested. And they just said it was too high. And so, that was generally the feedback, is just at a 750 entry point, with the cost and the unknowns out there. We did do a little more due diligence with respect to hazardous research, to try to get a better handle, and we do have some more information on that. We do know, and as everybody knows, that the fire station has some construction issues with respect to, like, back in the day, asbestos was used, and some of the mastics might have been used. So, there will be some elements of that that have to be dealt with. You're gonna want someone who's skilled in that. But we did learn that that project site right now, as it sits, is compliant with Mast EP. And, you know, there had been an oil spill out there, but it was resolved, and there's no use limitation on it for that time. So, we got a better handle on that, and we were better able to share that information. We included a little bit more information about that in here. But that was always, always available online at the DEP website, anyway. So, that, you know, anybody who knows what they're doing was gonna be able to find all that information. We just kind of included a little bit more in here.
So, your whole board met, discussed, and all came to an agreement on the new reserve price?
They actually, we met, and we went back and forth, they asked us to handle this. They, I mean, they wanted it to get it off. They wanted, they said, they knew with Steve's expertise and the fact that, you know, it's, it gets frustrating, because, you know, we all know we want a certain value, but on the other hand, it's really important to get it out there and get it on the books. And I think, you know, the cost of construction to do something out there is gonna be relatively high. So, that's the concern there, is that, so, anyone going in there, and Steve could probably speak to this better.
Steve, can you just go into your expertise and background?
I'm a construction manager and estimator. I've been building restaurants, hotels, the YMCA duties for over 25 years. I represent, in the private sector, groups that are going to do and perform development projects. We've performed many projects in South Boston, and now in Newport, Rhode Island. Not so much in the municipal side, but always on the private side.
And you're on the EDC Committee?
Yes, I am.
How long you been on the Committee?
Two years, since I've been there.
Two and a half years, maybe?
I haven't seen you.
Foxborough as well. The, one of the things with the, when we came to the 400, there was a, that's probably been one of the number-one topics we've spent a lot of time on. We've talked about zero, 250, 750, 500, 400. And what it really boiled down to, and where we landed with the 400, is that we're just trying to eliminate unqualified bidders, from just throwing something out there. We don't want 100,000 or 50,000 dollar bids coming that we even have to spend time on. We want somebody that understands the value of this project, the future value of the project, and we wanna make sure they have the financial capacity and can put an overall bid proposal in that's going to be viable. And when we came up with the 400, it's a justified number for a developer to come in. He's gonna have to, obviously, front that money, sit on it. He's gonna have to present a full overall package that, for a multimillion-dollar project for downtown, that ultimately will put millions of dollars of valuable property back, not even back, because it's always been municipal, but onto the tax revenue for the town. This will be go from a liability to an asset. And as Paige outlined, it's very specific, the criteria that we are looking for with the bid proposal. It's not just a, hey, throw a number at this and then sit on this property. It's the number you're gonna put on it to purchase the property, along with your proposal of what you intend to do with the property, and your timeline to do so.
And experience in doing.
That's right.
We're also looking for people that have done it. Because this is a complicated project, you know? I mean, with the fire station's hazardous issues there, you know, it is a complicated, but it can be done. That's what we did verify, it can be done. But it's not something that, you know, you're gonna wanna have a couple investors come in and sit on it, like Steve said, and go to figure it out. You're really gonna need to wanna know what you're doing to go into it.
I think that where it's already cycled through a couple of times now, we've also have some developers that have looked at this before, maybe walked away because they didn't have time to do their diligence on this. Obviously, that time has long come and gone. They've had plenty of time to look at this. We know there's interest in the project. I think, is our committee alone has spent greater than two years circling around. We've had state input on this, about the needs for the downtown, and the town of Foxborough, and the county as well, is what the needs of the area are. And for a project to come in here and build, I mean, what was the, I mean, its potential is 20-plus units, if they wanted to go that road. I mean, I think that you're looking at anywhere from six to 20-plus units from a developer, along with some retail or restaurant space, in a much-needed area, that the capacity we have for downtown is unlimited right now, because there is no competition, there is no value to a lot of the space down there. And developers understand this, and have watched what's been going on around the, you know, this area, along the train rail.
Somebody on the board?
So, the first time it went out, I think, at the auction, we got more than what we expected to get. But then it went through a process, and I think the bidder didn't build what the town wanted through a process. Second time, probably asked for too much, and that's what you saw. On this one, I like the 400 or a number, but the provision in there that you don't need that, if there's a proposal that the town really likes, they'll take less, right? So, you know, you end up with what you get, more important than the dollar in the pocket. I'm concerned about the schedule. We, this proposal's going out in two days. We've got a month for them to respond. And then, I think the process of evaluation, it goes through the EDC to whittle it down, and then the town manager gets three bids, or three top choices. Then it comes to the selectmen, all within 11 days. How is that even possible?
Well, we actually have, so, the proposal's coming in on the 8th. We have the EDC scheduled to meet, I believe, on the 13th. And then we hope to get it to the selectmen shortly thereafter.
On the 19th of February?
Yeah, it's aggressive, I understand. We're trying not to miss instructions.
Are we trying to get to the 2019 construction schedule?
Kind of, yeah. Well, because we're fearful of the market, you know, as this slides along, too, much further along, plus there's also municipal conversion in there that has to go, it all delays it. So, it's just, we are trying to make sure, and like Steve said, we do have a lot of people contacting us. So, that's the good thing. We do have market interest from parties in this. And we have people going in there to measure, I mean, we have interested parties, so that's beneficial. So, we're hoping that this will, that people are just waiting for this. And we do have language in there that gives us the ability to modify. You know, I mean, if we found we needed more time, we could do it. We have an asterisk in there, we say we could do it. But we're trying to be aggressive, to try not to lose a 2019 season.
But in your experience, from concept drawings, to construction documents, to building, to the conversion, all within a year, I've never seen that happen. I'm not being, I just don't wanna go down the road saying, this is great, we're gonna send it out, three's a charm, and then we're back four, because they can't get the 2019 numbers to work in 2020.
I think the, you know, all within, sometimes we talk year, calendar year versus construction year versus when a project actually kicks off. And we did discuss the timeline. It was one of my first questions about it being on the aggressive side, from a developer's standpoint, and having enough time to do your diligence on this. One of the big issues is, with the project of this size, it's going to happen, these, a lot of the developers are in the area, they're going to do this. Something is going to happen. The question is, where are they going to do it? So, if we miss the market, and we miss a developer or potential bidder that's going to move on to his project, it's not like they're gonna sit idle for a year, because this didn't happen. We wanna catch them on the front end while they're looking, actively seeking a site for their projects.
And this is the season right now to do it?
This is the season for that, correct, though?
But it's so tight at the beginning, are the developers out there that they just can't meet the schedule, they don't know about it? So, if you waited another month, you might get seven more that had an opportunity to look at it. Are we cutting, you know, our nose off despite our face just to get something out, and then focus on this group, rather than this group that could look at it?
Mm-hmm. Again, I think...
It just seems extremely tight, that's all.
It is tight. And as I said, there is, you know, we're trying to achieve this. I mean, it says on or about, it doesn't say, you know, drop dead date. So, it shows that we're trying to follow an aggressive schedule, but it doesn't commit us to it. So, that's, really, we are trying to stick to it. I mean, that's what, we have EDC already booked, you know? I mean, I'd be surprised if we got seven, we were talking about that, you know? I mean, we could get a few that are not, I mean, we were saying we'd be lucky to get three, you know, good proposals, if we're lucky. So, you know, maybe we'll get more, but, so...
It's just, every year that sits vacant, and you do the math, right, all the tax, I don't wanna be sitting here a fourth and a fifth and a sixth time, because...
We agree. And that's the first thing Steve said, is this has to get, we have to do this right, we have to do it now. So...
I think some of the language we left in there, if this goes out, and we receive four, five, six, seven bids, we've left ourselves with an option to go back and say, we're going to add some more time, we're going to need everybody's best and final bid. There's a way to circle back around based on the interest in the project. I mean, I think that when it goes out, if somebody doesn't have enough time, and they're honestly interested, I think they would come and try to put something together, or reach out and say, what's the timeline on the diligence? And we do have the ability to change the date.
Just out of curiosity, Paige, are there anybody saying, when's the next RFP going out?
Oh, yeah. They've been calling and waiting. So, that's, they have...
That's a good sign.
Yeah, we have, we have quite a few.
We even received something from a group, and somebody threw out a bid number, I mean, we couldn't, can't just take them.
Right.
But we did receive offers on this after the dates, since the last time this went around. So, there are, I mean, there are people waiting for this.
Some people didn't understand, like, the procurement process, and they were kinda like, well, since you got no bidders, can you just sell it to me? It's like, unfortunately, that's not how it works.
So, with that being said, I mean, does it make sense to issue the RFP on the 10th and give people a little more time? I mean, you guys would know better than me on how many people you think are gonna respond.
Mr. Chairman, I can probably, maybe shed a little bit of light on this, because the same questions you're asking are the ones that we asked the other day. So, we had the same type of meeting, the 400,000, was that the right number? Was the timeline too aggressive? It could mean that we get extended two more weeks. If we find that there's quite a bit of interest, and yet people need a little bit more time, we could extend it two more weeks. That wouldn't hurt the process, I don't think, in any way, shape, or form. But Steve has pointed out, and I agree with him 100%, that this is the right time for people who are looking for projects. And if they know that's, if there's stuff that's percolating right now, we wanna make sure that we're in the market for that. So, that's really the, we're trying to get on the front end of that. And so, your point's well taken, Jim. I don't, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying that, you know, we just wanna get going. We wanna, we wanna move forward now, because this is the right time to do it.
And when we do take, when people get the RFP, we do record their email address, and if there was any changes, we could let them know, you know, listen, due to questions or demand, we're gonna extend it two weeks. I think just one of the things we're trying to make sure is that we show a sense of urgency, and we show, you know, that these folks, that we're trying to move this, and it does say, you know, that we're trying to get a 2019 season, but we make no guarantees. So, it's just trying to get this going, that we hope to get this activated sooner rather than later.
We've also gotten out in front of some of the initial questions that, from a developer's standpoint, would come around, like, so, the meeting with the historic commission about teardown and modification, that timeline has already come and gone. So, some of their diligence has been done by us ahead of this game, and it's included in the RFP.
Right. And Steve's point, actually, was, if you'll notice on the front, it now says that the town is reserved, you know, an alcohol, a liquor license. That was a big thing that Steve pointed out, is that's one of the first questions, you know, restaurateur is gonna come into town, and what are the stakes on that? In some communities, you have to pay, you know, you have to wait for a license to come up and pay half a million dollars. So, that kind of information was very helpful to get, you know, we simplified it right here to make sure that folks don't have any questions on that.
So, the people that are still interested, I mean, are they saying they wanna start ASAP?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah?
Like I said, we have another architect going into measure. So, they're actually, because this, they, you know, we've made it pretty clear, they all know about municipal conversion, they know the timing is quick, like, what we're gonna be doing, I'm saying, we're working on it as fast as we can, we're trying to get in the season. And that's what they want, too. So, yeah, they are, they're sort of teeing up, because they know, you know, this is a little bit of an unconventional process with the municipal conversion. So, you kinda have to come in with a plan, and then they sort of might as well, if they get chosen, they can keep rolling on it, so...
So, there's two things that are important to remember, too, is that the timing on this one is a little different than the last time, because now we actually have another developer who's getting ready to start in the spring, right? You know, we've got the 50 units, the 50 units on Wall Street. And we all, and the restaurant is open now. And so, the, and that's, and so far, the early indication's absolutely won. So, that's a good indication that this is a good place to start sinking some money into a downtown area, because it's, I think we've tried to convey on several occasions that it's a domino effect. Once it starts, it keeps going. And I can assure you that this won't be the last project in the downtown, even if this goes forward and it works, it's successful. So, this is a start of a process that will evolve over several years.
And there's provisions in there for if a developer wants to go ground up and knock it down and build new, or invest to renovate it in one or both of the buildings that is fully open to them?
Fully open to them. But they will stipulate that when they apply to you, us, we, you know, their proposal-
That's one of the big criterias for who we're going to select, is that their, what their intentions are, it has to be part of their proposal.
Doc, Dave?
Nope. Been behind this since day one.
Will the third time be a charm?
Yes.
Guaranteed. Nothing's crossed.
Yes. Trying.
Who's crossed? Yes.
Yes.
All right. So, we don't have to vote on this, do we? I mean, it doesn't say we have to.
Probably should vote to issue the RFP.
Yeah, I would think, well, since it's town property, I would say, you know, vote to issue the RFP.
All right. So, Doc, you're-
Yeah, move to, move to, go forward with the RFP?
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
For the record, Leah abstaining.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great job, guys. Thanks, Bill. Thanks for all the hard work on this, too, in the committee.
Yeah, I really, big thanks to Steve. He really stepped up.
Did a nice job.
Yeah, it's great.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Bill.
All right. 7:50, tree trimming program update and discussion. Roger Hill, Dave Lallberti.
We're getting the chief, you know, chief-
You're going to take the chief's?
Yeah, so just, to let everybody know, just, this is just kind of like a, where are we, what's going on, what's the plan, tree trimming-wise? How are we set up? That's why I asked Chief Hatfield, you know, if we were to have a situation in town, you know, emergency power outages, you know, what kind of communication have we been having with National Grid, so...
Just to give you a little more information in terms of taking this issue up, the board has actually had this discussion publicly a couple times in the past about, you know, what's been done about tree trimming, and how big of a concern is it here in Foxborough, and that we do have a plan, and we follow the plan with National Grid. Dave is our local tree expert, has been doing this for 46 years, Dave?
Yep.
Yeah, so, I think, not just in office, obviously.
Started when he was two.
So, thank you for all your service to this community, too, by the way, Dave. And then, so he actually works with the group, with the tree, hand in hand, and he's about as good as you get when it comes to this issue. Secondarily, a couple things have happened since then, is that the end grid is no longer on strike. So, that's National Grid, that's National Grid, so that's no longer on strike. So, that's a plus for us in that regard. And Dave can give you an indication as to what work has been done recently, and what kind of things are being done as we speak. So, Roger's here to further support that effort, so I'll turn it over to them. Okay?
Thanks, Jim. Dave Lallberti, Tree and Park Supervisor for the Tree and Park Division. First of all, I'd like to welcome everybody to 2019, and I'm hopeful that we will have a lot of positive feedback and posts on the Foxborough Discussion Page. So, we'll just start with a tiny piece of history here about National Grid. In 2012 through 2016, they have trimmed the whole town of Foxborough. Every circuit has been trimmed. That being said, I'm going to start with National Grid's Hazard Mitigation Tree Program. This is a program that just deals with tree removals. They drive down a circuit, they identify the potential hazards. Then, I drive with them and we identify which trees are private, which trees are town. I get to put my input in there. If I have any issues, you know, then we'll deal with them, too, and we'll put that all in a packet. And then, from there, we have to go through a permission process where I permit the town trees, private permission slips are given to everybody that has a tree on private property. So, this process isn't just something that happens in a week, this is over months. In the past two years, this program has done two circuits. They have done the circuit that comes from Pier Street to Main Street, around by Granite Street, Garfield, Baker Street area. They've also done the Chestnut, North Street, Young Rome, Young Road, a little bit of Elm, and Summer Summer. So, in those instances, the Hazard Tree Mitigation Program has taken down 205 trees, three of which, if you add three more, they did three crane jobs in town for the bigger trees. Apart from the Hazard Tree Program, they have trimmed in 2016 to 2018, National Grid has trimmed 70 miles of road in Foxborough, 70 miles of circuit in Foxborough, some in South Foxborough, some in West Foxborough, some in North Foxborough, and some in East They also intend to trim 56 miles of road circuits between years 2019 and 2020. This program also has taken down 57 trees around town. A lot of them are ones that I've asked them to take down, and they come and they work with us, they'll take the tree down, do the chipping, we get rid of the wood for them. They've also taken 78 customer calls, and they have done one giant capital project, which started up in Plainville at Route 1, comes down 106. What they're doing, what they've done there is they've replaced all the infrastructure, put up taller poles, 12 to 15 feet taller, put up hurricane poles, heavier crossarms, we did all the transmission cables. When they got to, when they got to the line in Foxborough, they cut back 106 really heavy, took down hundreds of trees from the Foxborough, the Plainville line to the Mansfield line. That line went into Mansfield, cuts them back of the station jeep there, if you might say. It comes back on to Foxborough property on County Street, did the same thing, all the infrastructure is all brand-new, cut back County Street really heavy, went on to Spring Street, down the railroad tracks over to Elm Street, where they ground cut everything down the tracks, went across the street from Elm Street, back of the solar fields, and cut through the woods there, where they ground cut everything there, redid all the infrastructure, went out onto Coke Cassidy, down Pleasant, and tied into the substation in back of, across from Snyder Electric. So, that loop was also finished as a, as part of a capital plan from the Ponte Ave out to Chestnut Street, up Main Street, up Pier Street, and tied back in to make the loop, which is known as the Union Loop.
So, that Union Loop, in effect, now is completely all brand-new?
It's brand-new and really robust.
It's robust, it's heavy.
And they cut to the sky.
You know, so, I mean, it's been trimmed back, you know, heavy down through there.
Can I ask you a question on the, you had mentioned, and I drive 106 back and forth to work, so I saw all the work that they did last year, and the poles are gigantic, and then you, you know, you might go down Mill Street or something, and, you know, or West Street, where I know you're going to be doing something with the bridge, and you see these poles that, I mean, my toothpicks are bigger.
Yeah, I mean, I can't, I can't speak to that, because I'm on National Grid, I don't know when they come back in to do that type of infrastructure, you know what I mean?
But do they have a, do you know if they have a program, or can you ask them? Like, if I call, if there's a pole in front of my house that is pathetic looking, do I call, or do they know that, or?
A lot of issues, like, you know, customer calls, they deal with all kinds of things, you know what I mean? These customer calls happen to be tree issues, branches, you know, people see something and call them up.
Why don't you come up to the table, Roger?
One of the dilemmas we run into with the telephone poles is more than 50% of our poles are owned by Verizon.
Yeah, that's the other-
So, that's a huge issue. We don't have as good of a relationship with Verizon as we do with National Grid. Now, one of the programs that they've been trying to do for about a year and a half is have a program with Verizon that if they have a pole that's either snapped because of a storm, or in an auto accident or something like that, the National Grid doesn't have to wait for Verizon to come and set a pole, that they can do it and bill them for it. That is huge. Now, we've been asking for that since 2010. In 2010, we had to wait days for Verizon to bring telephone poles that are just not as responsive as National Grid. But one of the dilemmas we run into is, we got like a 50-50 split.
Is that common in other towns?
Yeah, it is. Yes.
The only place it's not common is communities that have their own municipal lighting system. We're not going there in this discussion.
Another program that National Grid is initiating is the white oak gypsy moth problem, that the white oaks get decimated because of the gypsy moths over the past few years, and we had a couple of stressed summers, so they're just dying everywhere. So, I've been, I've surveyed this town, we rode around this whole town, we surveyed the whole town for that issue. So, they have that program. I don't know when it's, if they're coming into town, I don't know when, but we have been surveyed, they know where the pockets of resistance is, so to speak. So, I mean, we have that also-
And that's for them to trim aggressively, or take down?
To take down all the, you know, the trees that might impact their wires.
The problem is that a lot of the white oaks are not on public property. If you go down, like, Mill Street, go down, a couple other-
I know Scroose Street has a lot of them.
You'll see, you'll see a lot of, like, View Road especially, you'll see a lot of dead white oaks. The good news is, the white oaks hang up there for a while, it's pretty tough wood, it doesn't weather out as fast as like a red oak or a pine does. And one of our other big problems is, we got 100-year-old pines that are brittle as hell right now. And we saw that in the big storms last year, when we had Mill Street blocked off with tin knockdowns and wires and everything else. You know, those, most of those aren't private property, and we can't touch them if they're on private property. And if, and we don't work over the wires or under the wires, so we have to depend on National Grid. But they've been great the last two years, and before that, too.
Yeah.
We took down over 400 trees just, you know, like, four years ago with them.
And over, and as far as, like, we're concerned, in the Tree and Park Department, just in the last two years, we've removed over 200 trees on town property. And that's not counting any trees that were damaged by storms. This year, my list is 72 trees right now, and we work on those throughout the winter. Last, last winter, at the end of the winter, we had those three storms, we had over 100 tree issues. Took us, we worked on trees for eight to 10 weeks. 20% of those trees were town trees, 80% were private trees. So, and a couple of weeks ago, we had six tree issues with the wind, every single one of those were private trees. So, I mean, as I look at these stats, maybe the question is, how can we educate the community on what they can do to help out with preventing some of these outages? I mean, we'll, we'll continue to monitor the trees on the town properties that are a concern and take the actions as needed. But, you know, the residents also need to monitor the trees on their property and, you know, in an effort to try to maybe help prevent some of these outages.
Not a bad idea.
Mr. Chairman, Dave, could you just clarify for people that the trees you typically take down are either diseased or rotted trees? Can you address that?
Almost every single tree that the Tree and Park actually addresses are dead. Because, you know, we don't, I don't want to take down trees that are, that are alive, they don't have to be. If they're, if they have rotten bases or they're split or something like that, that's what we do. And maybe, while I'm sitting here, maybe in a little bit of an effort to help a homeowner decide what path they should take. You know, you're going to look at a tree in your yard, obviously, you're going to see if it's dead, you're going to see if there's any big dead branches, you're going to look at, see if there's any basal decay or rot, you're going to see if there's any cavities in them, any holes in them, any of the leaders split, do they lean out towards the traveling public or over your wires? Those are the issues that you can visibly see and say, "Hey, something, I need to do something before an issue may arise." But I would also say that the town is not a consulting firm-
Right.
-for the public, you know, I mean, for the private sector. So, I mean, I'll throw that out there, and they can take-
So, what is the definition of a town-owned tree? Like, is it from the center of the road, or is it from the edge of the road into your property?
It's, the town, every street is different. I mean, Chris can even attest to it. We look up trees all the time. Some roads, you're 20 feet in. I just looked up one on South Grove the other day, and it's, you know, the town owns 20 feet into the people's yard, some are right-
From the center of the road, or the-
Could be from the center of the road, could, wherever we measure it from. This happened to be from the edge of the road. So, some, some people's properties are right dead on the, on the edge of the road, you know, so we don't own anything, you know?
A lot of the roads don't have layouts. Some do, quite a few do. The layouts give you the dimensions, and you can work usually off the center line. And we've got almost all of them on GIAS now.
Yeah, so it's easy nowadays. We, you know, it used to be, I'd go up to the assessor's office, measure everything out. Now, I can just overlay a map, and all the lines are right there, and I can just take the cursor and measure, and then go right out on the road. And I can tell you within minutes if it's ours or a private tree.
Anybody on the board have any questions to ask?
No.
I do think it's a good idea to educate people. I mean, one of the things I've seen a lot in a lot of the different storms, everybody complaining that, "Oh, Foxborough lost electricity again." And you go and look at the damage, and, you know, there's an 80-foot pine tree on somebody's yard, completely uprooted. You know, we can, you guys in National Grid can only trim as much as you can. I think you've just laid out, it's been pretty aggressive. And from your perspective, going around during these storms, I mean, is the majority of the outages from our trees, or their-
It is now. I mean, I just, just in last year, with the 100 trees, 20% of them were ours. So, 20 trees were ours, and 80 trees were, you know, not ours. But we have to deal with them, they fall in the road, now they're ours.
Yeah.
When we push them off the road during those storms, we put them back in the people's yard, so now they're still ours, you know what I mean? So, we end up cleaning up everything. And that's, that's just the nature of the beast. It's, we're not, this town is not any different from any other town. I live in Franklin, we lose our power there, you know, it's the same as any other town, you know? You live in New England, you're never going to beat Mother Nature. Mother Nature's always going to win. Short of clear-cutting the town of Foxborough, you're always going to have some kind of an outage. The chief can tell you, he's seen how many trees come out of private property, you know, and it's, it's more of an issue nowadays than it was when I started, because we, in my day, done a lot of trees in this town, you know, hate to talk, I can't even throw the number out, because I'll probably get hung.
I think that, really honestly, if we, a lot of people still compare last winter. Last winter was very unusual, when you see these 80, 100-foot trees with the roots, everything ripped right out of the ground. The last few months, if people are thinking of the outages that we have, one was a dead tree in a residential-owned property that came across and took out the power line. One was a telephone pole, bad telephone pole that was behind the bank that caused us to have an outage. And the others were two limbs that fell on the primaries from private land. Those just happen. Now, my biggest thing that we've all talked about for as long as I've been here is the ground-to-sky. I think anybody that's concerned or wants to know what we're talking about, go 106. That was a perfect model of exactly what we've been talking about for years, is trying to be like Mansfield a little bit, in regards to how they do it, is go from ground-to-sky, 10 feet, and I think they actually went further than 10 feet-
Yeah, yeah.
... away from the power lines. And it at least gives us a nice buffer to protect our power lines so that we don't have power outages.
We have, I mean, there's two sides to that ground-to-sky thing. The ground-to-sky thing will prevent the overhang, you know, from coming onto the wires, but it's not going to do you any good-
Right.
... for those 80, 100-foot-
Right.
-trees that just break off at the top, you know what I mean? It just doesn't.
Some of the complaints I've heard in the past, too, it's like when you do see them trimming on certain streets, and they're only getting 10 feet above the wires and everything else is still hanging, but it seems like they're, they're, I know, on North Road- But it seems like they're, they're, I know on North Grove Street a few years back, they did a much better job of limiting everything straight up.
Yeah, it's all about the money. They have some X amount of dollars to spend. And so they try to get as much as they can accomplish in a year's time, let's say, and alleviate some of the problems that they can do. And, you know, it's, I get it, you know? I understand people like their electricity nowadays. And I can tell you, just from a couple of weeks ago, a tree snapped off and it landed on top of a pole, coming straight down about a 40-foot piece. And tree crew was out there, they had umpteen trucks out there. We were out there waiting for them to get it off the, the wires and the pole. And they hemmed in hard because they had to shut the power off on West Street from like Caton down to Spruce. Well, you know, it's like an act of Congress to get National Grid to shut anybody off. But, I mean, it becomes a matter of life or death at that point. You know, it's a, it was a tough situation. It was one of the toughest things I've seen in years, the way it was hanging up there. And so, you know, they had to go call back to the office, they had to put jumpers everywhere. So that all took time. And then they just, you know, took that small section and shut it down for maybe an hour and a half to get everything all squared away.
From a, from an infrastructure point, like go in, you know, the trees seem like you have a, a good control over it. But the Union Loop is all cleaned up now. Is there like a, a next step from National Grid that we know of? Like from the Union Loop, we're going to go do this section or that section?
Dave will jump in, but usually they'd always deal with their primary system coming in. And then they start working towards secondary and then they, they start working towards the residential, like their third, their third lines. So those have been always their focus. And again, with those, they try to go back every three to five years to make sure they, the growth doesn't over, overcome it again.
All right, but I'm also.
Yeah, you're talking about infrastructure.
That's very hard.
That's hard for us to, to say.
If you're talking about power, power lines and the telephone poles.
You're in, the infrastructure on some of these roads is old.
Right, so my, my question is.
There's a lot of open face.
Does that fall on, on bill to say to National Grid, hey, this is some old stuff? What's your plan? Or do we have any leverage at all?
Well, we can, all we can do is we can appeal to them. But I think it's, instead of actually looking at it from an individual situation, it's probably best to get a, a indication of their capital plan and capital replacement program as to how they deal with that. And I do believe that they did come in and present that a few years ago. I don't think we've had an update since then, so it'd probably be good they asked them to come in and just give us an indication of that so we can understand that as well.
I got a, I got a, a kind of a summary here where they have capital jobs for the town in different circuits. They have like three capital jobs on Circuit 3431, which is north. They have one capital job on 3424, which is to the south side of town. And they have another capital job on 3422, which is W3, which is also on the south side of town. So this, this printout I got here has capital jobs in town for 2020, fiscal year 2020. So they have five capital jobs. I don't know what they are, but.
I know that in the last three to five years, they have spent a lot of time and a lot of money rebuilding Elm Street's substation, the Napolit Street substation. They've really rebuilt those completely. So I know that they're absolutely doing a lot in the town. And they've, we've seen an increase in how fast they come out when, unless it's 30 mile an hour winds, 40 mile an hour winds. But we've got a faster response time coming from them when we have a power outage. And I just think that we have a great relationship with them right now.
I think nowadays that they leave a crew in Foxborough, you know what I mean? They'll have a, they'll have a troubleshooting crew or a line crew that hangs around Foxborough. So they're quick to respond for the, you know, the fire department or police department. And a lot of times they have a, a tree crew that's maybe between Plainville and Foxborough. So, I mean, we can get them pretty quick in, in certain instances.
They have changed their process, even in the five years that I've been here, that they've changed their process. And, and they are much, much more responsive to us when we need them. And they, they do, they do keep us informed. When we call them, they address things. I mean, they're, they're very good with us. So we have a good relationship with them.
Anybody else have anything?
No.
Dave, I just want to say, I got involved with this back in 2009 when the Union Loop was a pie-in-the-sky dream. And you're right, the, the response time, might as well have been a can and a string back then trying to find somebody. But I guess, I mean, your, your history here in Foxborough goes way before that. But your work ethic, your integrity, your passion for the job is second to none. I've been following what you've been doing and it's, to come with all those papers and, and it means a lot to the residents that you know what you're doing here and it's appreciated.
I appreciate it, thank you.
How many more years, Jeff?
Yeah, I don't know.
You'll never say.
One at a time.
All right, thanks.
Take care.
Thanks, Jim.
Go Pats.
All right, a little after 8:05, FY20 budget discussion.
So tonight, I'll, I'll leave this, I'll make this brief. I just wanted to let everybody know the budget process has been going well. We finished all our internal budget reviews as of yesterday. I'm meeting with, Mike and I are meeting with the budget team tomorrow to make some final recommendations and make sure that we are, be able to present a balanced, a balanced budget. We will have that for you. We will start, hopefully present that to you as early as next week. And then we'll start the discussions and hearing before you, I believe was scheduled for the 22nd. But I know that we're trying to do an extra meeting to do that, but it doesn't look like we were able to put that together.
No, so I think.
So I'm going to defer to the board to see how you want to handle that for the next meeting. Or if you want to have two nights to do it.
When will we get the whole?
The documents, we're hoping to be able to put those documents out to you by next week.
Next week, early, middle, end?
Early, in the, early in the week.
Okay. I would like at least a week or two to look at them. I don't know what that does to the timeline on the other end.
Well, it would be, you'd have at least a week to, to, to look at.
And then on the 22nd, our regular scheduled meeting, discuss it.
So just by way of process, the, the only ones you'll be discussing before you are the ones that are, that are underneath the, within the Board of Selectments purview. So there's, there's maybe about a half a dozen that are not. School, Board of Health, Plenary Board.
Yeah.
You know, Water and Soil Commission, these are nature, so. So those are, those will be before you, those won't be before you, but the, the other ones will. Okay? So I just, that's just my, I just want to make sure I was clear about that for you and that the, the process that we're laying out for you is consistent with what your expectations are. So we'll be seeing you on the 22nd. Look for that meeting to be longer than usual because there'll be quite a bit of information. We are going to streamline the information a little bit more so that it's easier for you to digest and understand and sort of really point out areas where the budget has grown, where it has not grown and where, and, and just so you can point out those areas so that you can really focus on those and where the areas where you think you may want to have the most discussion.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Anybody have any? 8:20, Pine Street Parking, Alicia Santos, new commercial parking lot license for 28 to 30 Pine Street. How you doing?
Alicia Santos, very good, how are you?
Just let everybody know who you are and name and address.
I'm Alicia Santos, 28 and 30 Pine Street, Foxborough, Massachusetts.
I'm Raymond Sayeg, S-A-Y-E-G. I've known Alicia for a number of years and my practice is in Boston, but I'm a local resident. I also lose my power when the trees come down. I'm very interested in that conversation.
All right, do you want to just kind of give us a quick update on why you're here and then we'll get into?
Sure. As a result of an application to the town, Ms. Santos was granted a special permit by your planning board, which contained a number of conditions for 50 parking spaces at the rear of the property of 2830 Pine Street, which is first property off of Route 1 across the street from the Lafayette House. She's been working on this for quite a while. I assume, may I assume that you have the special permit and the drawings that she submitted? Spoke to Mr. Riccio, couldn't be here tonight. But his position, he said that he communicated was that with the special conditions being made a condition of the temporary parking, which is for special event parking, large events at Gillette, that there was no opposition from the planning board. We are asking the board to grant her the license for a three-year permit to have parking at the location, subject to the conditions as outlined by the planning board. My understanding is she has submitted the other requirements, which would include the fire extinguisher, the first aid kit and the fire department, which I didn't catch the chief, but that, that's been signed off on as well.
Okay. Any questions from the board on this?
Couple of questions. I, I read the, the planning board's special permit and then some of the dialogue that they had at those meetings. I've been made aware of this property just from years past. A lot of complaints that they were parking there regardless of not having a permanent permit. I've dealt with this with the past building inspector, the current building inspector. And I understand there were issues bringing to court. And the resolution was, well, everything's going to get stopped till we get this permit. Not a fan of that. I, I know the people that have been calling me. It's, it's right on the cusp of a resident, actually part of the residential zone goes through it. And there's a house right next to it. So that's one concern I have. Separate from the planning board, the selectmen have requirements. One, showing that there's an existing public, there's a public demand for this. Two, the commercial parking is necessary to protect the public convenience and welfare. And three, the commercial parking lot, which will be utilized for stadium events, it's needed for the stadium to operate. So those three pieces are criteria in which you have in, in your presentation. And then one of the other requirements is you need a sidewalk. So this is a square peg to a round hole in my mind. It wasn't addressed in your presentation, so those are my thoughts.
May I respond?
To the chair.
I believe that the need was discussed at the planning board. And that was a finding that they made was that the community's needs are being served by the proposal, that there's parking. I think one of the things that was discussed is there is parking going on across the street. And it does serve the public need. So both by looking at what's going on actually in the past, as well as the parking, the parking that's going on there now, it definitely serves a public need. That is an area where people have parked and walked over to Route 1, as I understand it, for a long time. In terms of the sidewalk, if I may share these with the board. These are photographs looking at the area in question. May I approach?
Yes.
Thank you. The parking area has approximately, where you come out from the parking on the property, approximately 45 feet to the sidewalk at Route 1. There is a, about a five-foot wide grass area that has been utilized by the parking that's going on at 23 Pine Street. And I think the consensus was that that's kind of a grandfathered walk-through. And the sidewalk starts right at that pole. And you're on a side street, you're not on Route 1 yet. The sidewalk actually starts somewhat into Pine Street. And so if you look at the, if you look at the spirit of what was intended was to keep people, is there a safe place for people to walk so they're not walking in the middle of the street? And are they out of harm's way? And is there a safe place? And I think that the, the parkers who park at 23 across the street, they walk along that same path. Some of them cut through the property at the Lafayette House. But some of them that park over on the Pine Street side walk that way. So it's already, it's already being used. And it's been used for a long time.
So are you saying that there are permitted parking lots that have to go on, that have to go on the street to get to the stadium? There's no parking lots? My understanding was that, because it's in our regulation, unless we want to have a variance for this, it says you need a sidewalk. Are you saying that there are parking lots that do not have a sidewalk right now?
What I'm saying is the people that utilize that parking lot, most of them go through the property of the Lafayette House. But the ones that park closer to the, to the Pine Street side, a lot of them walk up that same area that is shown in that photograph.
But they can get to the stadium if they want by using a sidewalk?
Well, the sidewalk is at the end of that path, which is right there. So yes, they're either getting to the sidewalk via Pine Street, which is where it starts, or they're walking through the parking lot of the Lafayette House to the sidewalk over there. It's the same sidewalk that wraps around it. So the area is not without a safe walkway and not without a sidewalk. You're talking about 40 feet, 40 to 45 feet from where they would come out, cross the street. And that's where that walk area would take them directly to the sidewalk before you get to Route 1.
I think what Jim is kind of saying, too, like right in our rules and regulations, each licensed lot shall have a sidewalk access for safe pedestrian movement. I, I'm looking at those pictures. People may be using it, but I don't determine that to be a sidewalk.
Well, the whole street doesn't have, the whole street doesn't have a sidewalk. It's a, it's a, it's a small street with about five or six houses on it.
But, but there's no other houses beyond this one going back towards Norfolk that are parking cars with a permit, are there? The, the, there's two lots that I am aware of that front Route 1 that has a sidewalk right there. So there's no, I mean, we will be going against our rules and regulations because there is not a sidewalk there.
Well, it doesn't say that it has to be a paved sidewalk. I mean, it doesn't, you know, a sidewalk doesn't have to be a piece of certain material. That area has been used as a, essentially a sidewalk for a long time.
It's, excuse me, but if it's, if it's, I'm looking at, there's a pole in the middle, it's grass, it's somebody else's. It's not a sidewalk. You can't say there's no definition of, it's either going to be cement concrete or bituminous concrete. But just because it's grass, you can't say that's a sidewalk because it's off the road. Is that what you, is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is that there's a walkway there.
None of those pictures.
It may not be made out of what you consider bituminous concrete, but there is a walkway there that takes you right to the port's sidewalk.
So I don't, I don't think in our regulations, when we developed this policy, I think we, we referred to a sidewalk as a, as a paved area, not, not a grassy knoll or a trail or, or something that's unkempt. I think, I think the sidewalk definition is clear in the policy.
Again, you're on, you're on a, a side street. You're on a sidewalk before you get to Route 1. So without putting in a, as you call it, a bituminous concrete sidewalk, then all the people that live, except for the people on the very end of the street, are the only ones that can have a parking lot. Even though the whole, that whole street is within the, or most of that street is within the zoning.
The only, the only other two lots, the closest two lots to you are fronting Route 1, right? That has a sidewalk. One, right, that has a sidewalk?
Twenty-three, I think, is really across the street. That may be a little closer than the one, but it's, those three lots are the closest.
But you walk through the, the front of that parking lot of twenty-three, which is the Lafayette House, right? Is that it?
Correct, that's my.
You walk through the front of their parking lot and you're on Route One. So that, that business fronts Route One, where this one is on a side street that doesn't have a sidewalk, even though it's close. I mean, we have to go to the, the policy that we have, and if it states that each licensed lot shall have a sidewalk access for safe pedestrian movement, I mean, we all, when this was created, you know, it was a sidewalk, it was a paved surface, not, you know, wood chips or grass or dirt, is my opinion.
It just struck on me, because it was brought up at the planning board, and where they focused on planning board issues and drainage and septic system, parking on septic systems. When that question was asked, I think what they answered was, that's not their regulation. Deal with the selectmen.
My understanding was the way that that came up was a couple of years ago, when the issue came up with another business on Route One, that there was a subcommittee or a small group that was sort of brainstorming, and that's where that came up for the sidewalk. And that's why I had suggested that perhaps, the, the concern was public safety, obviously, that people can safely get from where they're parking their car, and so they're not, you don't have people haphazardly being forced into a dangerous position. And that's why it made sense from the discussion that, yes, it would be addressed here, but if you look at where this property is and how close it is to, and what the area is to get from the parking lot to the sidewalk, that that grassy area is almost like a de facto sidewalk.
How about in the snow, as Jim said?
I can't tell you I know what happens in the snow to that area. I would not be forthright telling you that. I don't know.
Can you guess?
Can I ask?
Can you guess? Oh, sure, you can ask.
I think it'd be better for me to ask than guess.
It's clear.
Yeah. I had a feeling, given that, that area, it's cleared, is what I'm, is what I'm informed, that that area is cleared.
So they plow the grass?
They do, and I'll tell you why I think that, if I might show you.
Whose land is it? That, that sidewalk?
Town.
That area. Belongs to you. Is that that area?
Yeah.
Let me show you. They actually, at, the street they approach, they actually parks, some vehicles near there, and those people walk in that area.
So how does this prove that it's plowed?
I would just, by, by weak inference, that it's cleared when they, when they do that as well.
He clears it in order to put cars there.
Still doesn't, I mean, it doesn't constitute anything. I mean, it's, it's not, it's not a sidewalk, there's no snow on the ground, it doesn't prove that, to me anyways, I mean.
I mean, I can go back and forth, but it says each licensed lot shall have sidewalk access for safe pedestrian movement. So if someone gets out of their car and walks on the street and gets hit, and we approve this and there's no sidewalk, it's, it's black and white to me. I mean, you can solicit the town to pave it, to create a sidewalk, or we can change the regulations.
And if we, I mean, if there was another lot that was on Route One that, you know, didn't have a sidewalk and we grant this, then, you know, I mean, it's, it's a safety concern, as far as I'm concerned, and it's a rule and regulation.
Boston Business Parking Lot doesn't have sidewalk either. At the end of Boston Business, the Route One sidewalk hasn't started there yet either. That doesn't start until after the new lot over the bridge by Seasonal.
Board.
Which one, which one's that?
Boston Business.
So just tell me, like.
Across the street from the Dunkin' Donuts, if you, if you're traveling after Seasonal, you go over the bridge out of town.
Yep.
Boston Business is right there after the bridge on your right-hand side.
So after the bridge, isn't it that?
It's before the hardware store.
But that's, there's the lot that's now cleared for employee parking.
Correct.
And then Boston Business.
Right after that.
It's the garage base.
Correct, yes.
Is that Foxborough?
Yes.
Is it Foxborough?
Yeah, because I think she's.
I know that this is subject to your interpretation, but it does say each licensed lot shall have sidewalk access. I didn't read that as each lot had to have a sidewalk, sidewalk access.
To me, I would say, here's your frontage and here's your sidewalk, so you have access to it.
Like I said, I understand that it's subject to interpretation, but it wasn't clear that every property had to have that sidewalk. So if you have a sidewalk across the street from you, does that mean you don't get a permit, but they do because they have the sidewalk on their side of the, I didn't think that it was that, that the purpose, I read it as the purpose is, we're going to keep people safe. So if you got a safe place, can get them to a sidewalk, which I think is what, what we're trying to highlight here, then the purposes of the safety and the statute, the regulation are being met. That parking's been going on at 203 for quite a while, and I think that people have used that area quite, for quite a long time, without incident. I would ask you to keep that in mind.
Which area was that?
I don't know, which area?
Yeah, and when you said.
The area, the area right there at twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
The area that I'm pointing to.
Is it?
Yep.
So someone's parking cars on town property? So.
I don't know where.
So is this the walkway that you're saying, where people would walk where cars are parked?
Correct. That's the back entrance to the Lafayette House, if you're standing in the driveway.
So is the Lafayette House clearing that, then? If they're parking cars, I assume?
Yes.
Not the town clearing it?
No. It's privately cleared. The town doesn't clear it.
And according to that, they're parking the cars on the sidewalk, your definition of a sidewalk.
Part of it.
I don't know what the rest of the board is feeling, but I mean, I still have to go back to bullet thirteen there. Each licensed lot shall have a sidewalk access for safe pedestrian movement, and, you know, we're not, I'm not discounting any issues that may be happening up there with other lots or whatever, but according to our rules and regulations, I don't see that this has the sidewalk access.
Mr. Chairman, I just might point out to you too, though, that it doesn't even look like the board has the right to even waive provisions of this policy. I think it's, it normally, well, in some, I shouldn't say normally, but in some cases, it contemplates the possibility of the board waiving a provision, which this is not contemplated in this policy.
So it doesn't allow us to waive that?
The way, I was looking for that to see if the board could actually waive such a condition, but it doesn't appear that you have that ability to do that.
Mr. Manager, can I ask, does the board have the authority to impose a separate factor as a substitute or to?
Well, the, the board could actually issue, issue, it says the board may, it may issue a permit, which they could actually impose additional regulations, that's within their authority. But if the regulation is spelled out, which was adopted by the town, and it was, and this has been actively amended from year to year from several occasions, it looks as though, it wasn't contemplated the board had the ability to waive any one provision that's so stated in the, in the regulation itself. And I have, I think you have had the experience where you see that written into the regulation itself, where the board may waive upon, you know, a petition or a request to do so.
Well, what I was wondering was whether the board would consider, and given this physical layout, a police detail between the area.
That actually contemplates, that the regulation actually contemplates that the police chief, at this discretion, may require a police officer, not even the board in this case.
But they mean that as a condition where there is no, as.
I'm not here to argue your, the merits of your case, I'm just saying that the challenge the board faces is that they don't have, only have the ability to waive it, waive the provision that says that they have to have a sidewalk. That's the challenge they're facing.
And this was adopted at a town meeting, so anything amending or changing?
Hasn't been amended since 2005, near as I can tell.
No, it was amended March 29, 2011, April 29, 2014.
We're on to the next page.
June 23, 2015.
Twenty fifteen, so I apologize, it was amended.
You were right on the 2005.
I didn't, I didn't see the second page.
Now, those amendments, those are made at town meeting, or?
Police chief. No, it was by the board.
So what we're saying is tonight, we don't even have the ability to waive it.
Well, we make, we would, we would make the amendment, but at the top it says it is an article at the warrant in the town meeting. No, I'm sorry, this wasn't from 1972.
Yeah, the original, the original.
We do have the ability to amend it.
And if we were to entertain amending it, we would need to do?
Public hearing.
Public hearing, I would assume, right?
If you amend it, you have to amend it at town meeting. If it was this, it was adopted at town meeting, you would have to amend the regulation.
Well, it looks like some of the other amendments may or may not have been done at town meeting.
Well, it's, I apologize, it said regulations amended by the board of selectmen, so you could actually, you as a board could have to hold amended.
Yeah, we would have to have a public hearing.
Correct, to do that.
So it looks like we can't approve it, because we can't change the rules and regulations.
Waive a provision, specific provision.
Yeah, there are. I mean, there, it looks like there are some other lot members, if anybody wants to weigh Take that as.
Just, I just have a couple.
You want to come up here, Greg?
Sure.
Either up to the microphone or at the table.
Yep.
Just state your name.
Yeah, Greg Spear, and I own 124 Washington Street where Pine Brook Office Park is. Just a couple little side notes, 23 Pine Street and the Lafayette House are owned by Ron Young. So even though people might be walking on the road, they're parking, they can walk through his lot, he has a pathway that goes from the residential house directly, you know, to it. So it is kind of contiguous. I don't know if it's common ownership, but I know he's a common person. And then the regulations with the sidewalk date back a long time. The town was in litigation with Dimitri over not having a sidewalk, and they took him to court, and I think the town lost. And then they negotiated with him to make sure they have a sidewalk in front, and when they widened Route One in front of my building, they had a land taking and they took part of that back to pay for the sidewalk along, you know, that area that ties into where the bridge is. So we contributed to that sidewalk at that time with everybody else, so for the most part. And the other thing, Pine Street, if you look at it, I don't know if they, any nighttime pictures, but Pine Street's a dark street, there's no streetlights on it, so you have a little lighting from the Lafayette House and from Seasonals, but the rest of it's a very dark street. So.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Should we take a vote?
Yeah. So we're going to have to make a motion to approve, and then we're going to have to vote, right?
Yeah, are we, can we, we can move to approve it even though the regulations don't?
You can move to approve it and then determine if the board, if the board supports that, but.
That has to be.
The other side of it is you can make a motion to not approve it based on the fact it didn't comply with the regulations.
Okay. That's fine.
Which was the better way to do it?
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't comply, and we can't fix it tonight, so we make the second motion.
So, move to deny the new commercial parking license for 28 to 30 Pine Street, subject to the conditions of approval. We don't even need that part.
No.
No.
Well, didn't Bill say due to the fact it didn't?
Yeah, due to the fact that it doesn't comply to item thirteen in the commercial parking regulations, which cannot be, which can't be waived.
Tonight.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion?
I just like, I mean, it looks like you guys have put a lot of work into this, so, you know, hopefully we can come up with some resolution, you know, that's, you know, provides safety and everything still, but, you know, unfortunately.
Okay, so motion made, seconded. Those discussions, all those in favor of denying? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Selectmen's update. Happy New Year, everybody. Over here. Just a reminder too, this was Chief Hatfield's last meeting that he will be here with, and we do have his event next.
Time play, the eighteenth.
Next Friday night.
Right.
Yep. Anybody else on the board have anything?
A week from Friday, right?
A week from Friday.
Yeah, a week from Friday.
I've been doing the same thing all week.
Yeah.
It's a whole new year, a whole new perspective, right?
All right, town manager update.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman, and just happy New Year to everyone as well, hoping that this year will be, you know, a very productive year as, as we have in the past. I did obviously advise you about the budget hearings that have been completed. Annual town meeting warrant is open, and as it typically is, it will close on, on February 15th. So we've advised everyone to start submitting their articles that they have, and we, we already have a list going of those that we typically would do for an annual town meeting anyways. There is an opening on the Conservation Commission. Applications to sit on a town board committee is available on the town website. This has been, and this has also been advertised on our social media, so if anyone who has an interest in this particular opening, obviously, we certainly want to have some level of background, but it's not required, but it'd be, it's always beneficial to have someone who has somewhat of an interest in environmental issues to serve in that capacity, but there will always have, there have been in the past situations where people don't have any background and still can serve in a, in a productive way, but certainly I think it is helpful to have that. The annual MMA, MMA annual trade show is, is going to be beginning in Boston next week. The hospital, the Foxborough Health Department will be receiving the Kenneth Pickett Award and Municipal Innovation Award for the, for holiday, which is a situation where they have actually engaged with several communities in the region to, for septic haulers who have had their vehicles inspected in one location to make it easier for the haulers as well as for the other participating towns, so we have one inspection day for everyone. And it seems to have worked very, very well during the past few years, and now it's gaining some momentum with other communities, we're getting more and more communities involved in that. So that, that process is going to be awarded, actually prior to the, to the, to the annual, annual banquet, which occurs on Saturday, the 18th. So we will be, we'll be there to try and receive that, see if that event, Saturday the night.
The 19th.
Saturday the 19th, thank you very much. I'm thinking the 18th, because we'll be, because that's the retirement party, so. Chief's retirement party is the 18th. So it's a busy weekend, needless to say. That's, Mike and I will both be attending that weekend. I'll be leaving on, I'll be going on the 17th for the mayor's board of directors meeting, and then also Mike will be there for, on the 18th and 19th for the MMA board entire trade show. Those are just some of my thoughts. Mike, do you have any, any other things?
Just a couple of quick updates. So we're wrapping up negotiations with the police department, and we're well on the way with our, with our fire department union negotiations, and so we expect to close the last of the open collective bargaining agreements before the spring town meeting. And recruitment's going on. We are at, at the end of our recruitment for our assistant assessor position. That will be wrapping up later, next, later this week, and we'll be moving along with That will be wrapping up later, next, later this week, and we'll be moving along with our treasurer collector recruitment. And that's all I have for this evening.
That'll be the following week, correct?
Right, next week.
When, when's Mary Beth's last day?
She will be gone on the 22nd, so she'll be her last day. Should be here for her last meeting.
Good.
What a way to spend your birthday.
Exactly.
All right.
So we just have her come in for the special guest appearance, and then, and then we'll leave, so.
Ready for action items?
All right. So we have quite a few action items tonight. The first one, move to approve tuition reimbursement for Officer Charles Gallagher in the amount of $3,420.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve tuition reimbursement for Officer Scott Dion in the amount of $1,644.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Move to approve tuition reimbursement for Officer Kenneth Fitzgerald in the amount of $1,644.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Move to approve early liquor license extension request of 11:00 a.m. on Sunday, January 13th, 2019, and potential additional playoff games.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Move to approve two one-day all alcohol license for Fred Smurlus slash all pro tailgates doing business as First and Goal for events on January 13th and January 20th, 2019, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:30 p.m.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve, move to accept a gift donation of $300 to the Boyd and Library from the Foxborough Lions Club for museum passes.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Move to approve the board of selectmen meeting minutes from November 13th, 2018.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the board of selectmen meeting minutes from November 27th, 2018.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Move to approve the board of selectmen meeting minutes from December 13th, 2018.
Second.
December 11th, sorry.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion?
I was absent, so I will.
All those in favor?
Aye.
One abstaining?
Move to approve the board of selectmen meeting minutes from December 18th, 2018.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
It would be nice, one of these meeting minutes is when Dexter was here.
Yeah.
Be nice to send him the meeting minutes.
Yeah, oh, I'll take care of that.
Yeah.
Could do that.
Yeah, they're definitely good.
Once they're approved. All right, so move to close the public session, enter into executive session not to reconvene, and the executive session is to conduct strategy in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, fire chief contract.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Roll call.
Leah, yes.
Yes.
Mark, yes.
David, yes.
Chris, yes. Good night, everybody.